I've been hot. It was fun.
The informal meeting of city commissioners called to order, clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Estrav.
Here.
Mrs. Houston.
Here.
Mrs. Tackett.
Here.
Mr. Rue.
Here. Mr. Heck.
Yes, Commissioner, we have two work session items tonight, and our first one, we have with us from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Chris Shutey and Christina Jarrell, and they are going to update us on a great event that's almost here, Holiday in the City. So with that, Chris and Christina.
Ryan and staff, Commission, Mayor Rue, thanks for having us tonight. I am Chris Shutey with the Greater Springfield Partnership and Visit Greater Springfield. Just want to talk to you guys a little bit tonight about one of our community's great traditions, Holiday in the City. Holiday in the City is coming up, begins on November twenty eighth. So just a quick little bit of history that a lot of people don't know about the event, but the Greater Springfield Partnership assumed leadership of Holiday in the City exactly ten years ago. This will be our tenth Holiday in the City event that we have managed. We picked up the event following the dissolution of the Center City Association, who had run the event for the prior ten to fifteen years, ahead of that, did a great job really establishing that event for the community, building it up through the years. Then, over the past ten year window that we have run Holiday in the City, it's grown from a one night event to what has become a five week event, and really benefits our downtown merchants, our downtown retailers and restaurants, because it really extends the time that people are spending downtown for Holiday in the City. So this year, we kick off with the Grand Illumination event, that's going to be on November twenty eighth. So Grand Illumination includes a lot of different sub-events that Christine is going to tell you about. Santa's Arrival Parade, our outdoor ice rink, which we're now in year five of the outdoor ice rink. Ice skating kids amusement rides, and the big, you know, the big feature item is the fireworks and drone show, which happens at seven o'clock this year. Holiday in the City is presented by the Greater Springfield Partnership, but I would be remiss in not thanking all of our sponsors, of which there's almost a hundred and ninety event sponsors this year, including our premier event sponsors, I want to make sure I read them, so I've got them Assurant, City of Springfield, thank you guys, Jeff Wyler Springfield, Lagos and Lagos, and the Turner Foundation. And really also want to shout out our fundraising director, Beth Goodrich, Beth is the one that makes this event happen. She works directly one-on-one with a hundred and ninety event sponsors to make this event a reality. So thank you to Beth for all of her hard work, hopefully she's watching to hear that. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to Christina, she can tell you a little bit more about the Grand Illumination.
Great, so I'm Christina Jarrell, I am the Downtown Events Programmer, and as Chris said, Grand Illumination will take place on Friday, November twenty eighth. Everything kicks off at five P M., and then we'll wrap up around eight thirty or nine P M., give or take. I'm just going to kind of run down the list of events you guys can see here on the screen. So we have our outdoor ice rink, that'll run from five to nine P M., and it will be the same as in past years, five dollars gets you skate rentals and time on the ice. We will have skate assists, we have six new ones this year that we are very excited to put out on the ice. Then we'll also have food trucks, just to name a few of the local food trucks we have, we have Briella's, Jojo's Barbecue, D N L Concessions, Under Pressure Mobile Kitchen, C Marie Sweet Seductions, and that's just to name a few, we have a couple other surprises coming out that night. So you can definitely grab a bite to eat all over town. A lot of our downtown restaurants will also be open until nine or ten P M., so if you don't want to eat before, you have plenty of time to eat afterwards. Then we will have the kids' rides back again, the Ferris wheel will come back, I think that was a great hit last year, and it will also be free, same as last year, and we are including the mini Himalaya, which we are super excited about. There will be the mini roller coaster for the kiddos, as well as the Ferris wheel. Both of those are free of charge, thanks to Lagos and Lagos, Bushnell and Jeff Wyler. Then we will have Santa's Entrance Parade, that will start at six P M. The Grand Illumination of the Tree will be about six thirty, and then fireworks and drones at seven. Then after that, you guys are free to mosey around, go grab some skates. There will also be a special live performance of The Weekend Effect at the State Theater, kicking off at seven thirty, so that will be super fun and very festive.
And warm.
And warm, yes, and warm.
Yeah, we kind of gave up on the idea of a band outside, to be honest, this year, because it's just,
Too cold.
It's fun, but it's miserable for the bands, and we've had some bad luck over the years with the bands really out there freezing. So yeah, so we're moving the band indoors this year.
Yeah, and that's just kind of the quick, easy view of events. And then we have our event map, you will see this on our social media channels, on Facebook at Visit Greater Springfield, and on Instagram. So a couple of things to note on this map is we will have specific handicap accessible parking, thanks to Richwood Bank, West Banco, and Park National, so their downtown lots will be exclusively for handicap accessible parking. Make sure you have your sticker or your license plates, that will be from five to six P M. to allow everyone to get down, get parked, and easily get to the parade route, which will come down the two full blocks of Fountain. After six P M., we will open those lots if there are any spots left to any other cars that need places to park. Something else important to note is that we are going to keep the roads open downtown as long as we possibly can. So all the road closures will really happen at three P M. approximately. The only road closure that will be all day long is from Jefferson down to High Street, because that is the area in which we set up fireworks and drones, so we can have no pedestrians and no vehicles go through there. Explosives, very expensive drone equipment, and we want to keep everybody safe. So if you are going to park in the lots behind the library, or over there on Jefferson, please come down Center Street to access the event. Same thing if you're over in the Y parking lot, come down Limestone, those are the easiest way in. You will not be able to walk down that part of South Fountain at all.
Again, no need to commit any of this to memory, we will have this out a lot. You'll see this in print form, you're going to see it in digital form, on social media, you'll see it on websites. So just to give you kind of just an overall picture, though.
Yeah, and then it'll be out and let you guys know where the roads will be closed and at what intersections. The parking garage will still be completely accessible, there's tons of parking there, you have all the other parking around town. But most important one is that handicap accessible parking, five to six P M., just to kind of help everybody out and make it a bit more accessible for the community. So then our outdoor ice skating rink, so that is kind of all Grand Illumination stuff, and as we know, Holiday in the City is not just Grand Illumination, it is five weeks, as Chris mentioned, of tons of events. The key of that to me is the ice rink, so that will open on the twenty eighth and run every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday till January fourth. So we have modified our Sunday skate, it used to be an evening skate, it is now a daytime skate. So it's perfect, go grab some lunch, come over, skate, it'll be super fun. Then we will be closed on December twenty fifth, because it is Christmas, but thanks to United Senior Services, they have offered to open up the rink on Christmas Eve for a special Home for the Holidays skate from eleven to three P M., which is great, it'll be super fun. Something else we have at the ice rink this year is we are adding in a to-go concession, where you can kind of grab chips, candy bars, just quick little easy things. And then we also will have a warming tent this year. Now, it will not be a warm cozy sixty-eight like your house, but it will help take the chill off. Thanks to Home City Tents for coming up with a very creative solution to make that possible, it's a great addition to the ice rink.
And one other thing I'd like to mention about the ice rink, Christina mentioned the nonprofits, so we have a number of nonprofit partners that assist us in running the day-to-day, night-to-night operations of the ice arena. And then they actually take fifty percent of the income generated. So that works out great for us, works out great for them, it's a good fundraiser for them for special purposes. Something we've done since the first year of the ice rink, and now it's been so popular, they now come to us looking to take shifts. So yeah, really happy we can do that, it really helps out some of the nonprofits locally.
Yeah, and the concession will also have donation, hot chocolates, so if you buy a cup of hot chocolate and you decide to donate one, five, ten dollars, one hundred percent of those proceeds will go to that nonprofit, so this is just another revenue source for them, so they can keep doing the work that they do in our community. And then, so we have the Holiday in the City five week celebration calendar, because once again, it is not just Grand Illumination, it is a whole five week of events. So this calendar is going to be on Facebook, it's already published, you're going to see it around downtown at different locations, and it highlights a lot of great events from kind of large community ones like SantaCon and the Nutcracker, to kind of just these awesome free movie nights at the State Theater and Myers Market, as well as some special hours at Hatch Artist Studios to grab some very interesting and unique homemade gifts before the holidays. So please check this out, mark your calendars, plan your December. Once again, all of this will be on our social media channels, through Visit Greater Springfield Facebook and our Instagram. And that's kind of the rough wrap-up of five weeks and five minutes.
Well, well done, well, thank you for such, working on this so hard, and I agree with you, Beth Goodrich is a, she'll grab onto you until you say yes.
She will, yes.
She does a great job of helping our community, for sure. I want to know, can you just tell us how many estimated are in the crowd on the night of the Grand Illumination? How many people come to downtown Springfield on that opening event?
Yeah, yeah, and so we have a new tool called Placer AI, which is a really interesting, it's an interesting tool that will allow us to measure crowd estimates, and it's based on cellphone data. You probably don't know when to, don't want to know how it works exactly, because it will still frighten you of how accurate it can actually be. But no, so it's based on cellphones, and it can get you an account that's about ninety-four percent accurate for almost any event. So last year, we had over five thousand people for the opening night event, and that was with weather that was pretty tough, if you remember last year. So I would anticipate, it looks like, in fact, we just looked today, looks like it might be a pretty nice snowy evening, not super cold. So I would anticipate maybe even more like six to seven thousand. But yeah, so a lot of people downtown all at one time.
Awesome, awesome, well, thank you so much for your hard work. Other comments from Commissioners, Dr. Estrav?
I just want to say thanks, not only to the two of you, but the many people involved in making this a reality in Springfield. It's a great event, and I keep my fingers crossed for good weather to make it a wonderful event outside.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you guys do, my children are now eighteen and twenty-five, and we used to come down all the time before I ever even imagined being a city commissioner. So it was always a great time for our family, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
And I would be remiss not to just say thank you to all of our sponsors, like Chris said, a hundred and ninety-two sponsors, this is really a massive community event. And not just the sponsors, people who donate their time, their money, and the downtown businesses and other local businesses and organizations who have all of these great events, so you can have five weeks of things to go to that are low to no cost. I mean, it really makes for a great, very like, happy holidays, December. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone in our community who has donated their time, their effort, their brain cells, I know mine are running in short supply right now, but without them, this would be absolutely impossible.
I too, just want to thank you, seeing the evolution of Holiday in the City over the past twenty-five years has been phenomenal. And then when we added the drones, it was like the mic drop, because I thought, we're going to have to pick fireworks or drones, and Chris was like, we got them both, it was amazing. I would like to hear a little bit more about the setup. Who's setting it up, how long does it take to prepare for this event? I feel like Holiday in the City never leaves your radar all year long.
No.
But just kind of explain a little bit of what it takes to put this on.
I would say Christina legitimately starts working on this a good six months to seven months out. Fundraising starts a good four months out. And then the actual physical setup, which thanks to Derek Snowden and his team, that does a lot of that work on our end, you know, the ice rink alone takes a good solid week to ten days, not even including the freezing part of it, actually freezing the ice. You have to layer the ice in, it's a very tricky little thing, I mean, you can't just flood it and watch it freeze. You have to layer in the ice or it will break, literally, so that's a long process, and Derek's been working on lights now for already a month. So putting up lights around town, lighting the various, you know, trees, structures, so it is a long process. It is just a, it's an all-encompassing thing, and yeah, thanks to Christina for doing a great job with that.
Thank you to all of you guys, everybody that puts it in, puts the time in behind the scenes and in the front to bring joy to the community for so many weeks, so thank you, guys.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of city workers that also help us out with putting up the tree, the tree is a massive undertaking, you know, we had cap construction, C N S Tree, and Dan's towing, along with all of the city maintenance crew, putting that into place. I know Jeff Thomas plays a pivotal role for us in aiding Derek in getting that ice rink in the exact correct spot, because it can't just be wherever, it has to be in a very specific spot with very specific specifications, so we are very appreciative to that and to everybody who helps us out.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Fantastic, thank you so much, appreciate the presentation.
Appreciate you having us.
Commissioners, our next work session item is bringing awareness to students, or BATS. And with us is the BATS adult ally, Beth Dixon, and a host of students that are participating in the program. So Beth, I'm not sure the best way that you want to do it, if you want to come to one of these mics, if you want to come down and have the students each come down, so they can say, talk about the program. And if, when you get situated, if you want to tell us your name.
Can you hear me? Hi, hi, everybody, my name is Mary Cunningham, I am the president of BATS. I'm a senior, I'm from the Miami Valley School. And so what BATS is, like you said, bringing awareness to students, we are a youth-led group with about fifty members, ranging like ten different schools in the region. And we focus on substance use prevention and mental health awareness, and so we are here today as our policy group, and we are all representatives of BATS. And we're really passionate about policy, and we recently went to the State House to talk to representatives and senators about House Bill one seventy-two. And so that's what we're going to talk about today, and we hope that you just listen with an open mind and hear what we have to say, so thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Emerson Davian, I'm a junior at Springfield High School and the vice president of BATS. I'd like to start by just introducing what House Bill one seventy-two is. So currently, students, high schoolers, middle schoolers, if they're in danger of harming themselves because of a mental health crisis, they can currently receive up to six sessions of mental health services, or thirty days, before needing parental consent. House Bill one seventy-two, if it were to pass, would eliminate this access to mental health resources without parental consent, and would require every student in any, in every situation to get that parental consent before being able to access those mental health resources. So as the policy group, what we do is we research policies and we introduce them to our larger BATS group, which, like Mary said, encompasses a wide variety of experiences, backgrounds, and culture. And so about two months ago, we introduced House Bill one seventy-two to our larger group. And I just want to talk about the three main points that our group found to be important with this bill. First, we think that this bill is an obstacle, rather than something that would help a student receive mental health access. And we'd like to preface that by saying, mental health access should be a priority for students. Especially because in this case, it would, mental health resources would only be available for students if they are in danger of harming themselves, and that is an emergency situation. Requiring a student to go to a parent that may be hard to reach or unavailable before acquiring those that care is an obstacle that could cause harm to the student and to those surrounding the student. The second point that we found was that the bill doesn't address all students in all situations. It's not inclusive to the entire youth population of Ohio. Many students face problems with abusive parents, neglectful or negligent parents, or parents that aren't up to the standards or aware of the standards of our mental health resources. A student that has to go through a parent that may be uninformed or not able to understand the importance of mental health resources would greatly, would create a barrier between that student and the resources that they need. And finally, we like to address a main point that proponents of the bill make. The proponents' main purpose for the bill is to create stronger bonds within the family and to create a more trustworthy household. We think that this approach towards that goal is backwards. Trying to create a trustworthy bond by forcing a student to talk to a parent that may not have made the effort to create that trustworthiness is not how you create a strong household. Instead, we would advocate for programs and resources that are available to parents and students at an earlier step in that relationship building, that would allow a parent to create a strong bond to a student, that would create a trustworthiness, that would allow a student, that would encourage a student, but not force a student to talk to their parents about their mental health issues. So with that, I'd like to pass it on to Saad, talk about some of his experiences.
Hello. Hi, everybody, thank you all so much for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Usaid Ashraf, and I'm a junior attending Springfield High School. So as Mary already touched on, us as a mental health task force policy group went to the State House to talk about House Bill one seventy-two. We discussed with senators about how this bill is harmful for students who want access to mental health resources. And I'd just like to share a few things about some of the points that I talked about at the State House. As mental health is one of the biggest issues that society as a whole faces right now. So it's really important that we bring awareness to this problem. So House Bill one seventy-two, as Emerson described, is a bill that requires parental consent at almost every step of the way for a student's mental health. Now, on paper, that sounds like a good idea. It sounds like a place where students and their parents can just get together and open up about mental health struggles. But in reality, this is not the case. So many students across the state of Ohio are in situations where they don't have an environment or a home to go to where they can seek guidance. They don't have parents where they can go to to open up about mental health struggles. That's the whole problem that we have as a group with House Bill one seventy-two. Now, at the State House, I talked a little bit about a personal story from Springfield High School. There was a boy at Springfield High School in my grade. He was caught in possession with a vape at the school, and he was sent down to the office by one of the security members. Now, the boy's mom was already waiting for him in the office, and instead of replying with worry for the kid or concerned about the kid's mental health, the mom just replied with, I told you not to bring that to school today. Now, this moment meant everything to me. It showed me that it wasn't just the vape that was the problem. It was the fact that the adult responsible for that student's life and that student's mental health wasn't making changes for the student, wasn't helping him to better his mental health. And this isn't just the case, this isn't just the case of one boy at Springfield High School. It's the case of thousands of students all across the state of Ohio. They're dealing with issues just like this. And it's not just because they're trying to fit in by using vapes. It's not because they're trying to look cool in front of their friends by using painkillers. They're experiencing these bad influences, possibly from our parents, and I know it's a taboo subject and something that we don't like to admit as a society. But a lot of the times when a parent has bad influence or bad actions upon a kid, it causes mental health, a mental health problem. And you can't expect that kid to turn around and ask their parents for mental health help and guidance when their parents are a bad influence on them. So thank you all so much for the opportunity. So, uh, thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak today, and I'd like to pass it on to Anya.
Um, hello. My name is Anya Amir, and I am a ninth grader attending Springfield High. So, House Bill 172, the main goal is to promote parental involvement, involvement in the public school system. Now, this bill was made solely for the idea and the hope of helping parents be more involved in the system. This bill was not created for the youth. This bill was not considering the barriers, the problems that youth would face in result of this bill, as this bill is creating a literal barrier to receive mental health resources that can be important, especially in emergency situations. So this bill, it is trying to limit students in order to accept these resources. And while people might see this bill as a really good thing, unfortunately, when you ca, take it down to the daily s, life of a civilian, it actually does not have any good, it cannot be the best thing for them. As many students, um, would definitely need these resources, as YRBS data has shown that 50% of middle school students do not have a trusted adult, and 40% of high school students do not have a trusted adult. So this demonstrates there is a definite need of these mental health services, but when we are instituting barriers for them to receive it, unfortunately, they will look through other ways to receive that care. So like you said, I too also have personal stories at Springfield High School, where many a time I will see a student complaining of having a hard time at home or just having a hard day in general. Now, the, another student will offer them a vape. Now, the problem is not just the vape, it's what they think behind the vape. They view the vape as a solution to the problem, because they may have seen their parents, it means they have may have seen other people use it, and because of these barriers, they might not be able to receive the proper care. And so they'll often resort to such drastic me, measures to treat these issues they may have because of these. So we need to think about, if we're going to make resources harder to obtain, then they're not going to like, just stop having the problems. They're going to look through other, more harmful ways to do, to help cope with it, and then they're going to help try and have others do the same. So while this bill may have had good intentions, unfortunately, it's just not going to play out in the way we want it. And I think that we need to further either stop the bill completely, or just find better ways to make it more accessible to the day-to-day life of every student. So I'd like to pass it down to Jeff.
Hello. Okay, uh, good evening. My name is Jack Hill. Uh, thank you guys all for having us here. Um, so I sort of just want to begin by pigging off, piggybacking off of something that Emerson said, which was that students aren't necessarily always going to have the proper, the parents with the proper knowledge to be able to address mental health issues. Now, House Bill 172, as you guys have heard tonight, is proposing that students have to are required to get parental consent immediately in order to access mental health services within their schools. Now, this is problematic, because as Emerson stated, and as Usaid and Anya both stated, parents are not always going to be completely knowledgeable, they're not always going to be the best influences on students, they're not always going to be the most available, and no one household is the same. So students cannot always rely on their parents to be able to provide them with the mental health services that they need. One thing that I want to note that is extremely important, and I hope all of you take into consideration what Anya said, that 50% of middle school students feel like they don't have a trusted adult, and 40% of high school students feel like they don't have a trusted adult. That's terrifying, that students feel like they can't come out and talk about their mental health, and that students feel like they can't go to anybody about anything. That's a root problem, and that's what's going to continue to cause problems with mental health, not just here in Springfield, but in the entire state of Ohio. So what this bill is doing is it's going to sever this tie that any student who does have a connection with an adult or trusted adult in a school building, these ties are going to be severed, this relationship is going to be severed, and there's going to be a barrier between what students feel comfortable telling their trusted adults at school and what students feel comfortable saying at all. So I just hope that you guys will all take into consideration what this bill might do, not just for this, not just for the students here in Springfield, but for students all around the state. And thank you. I'd like to pass it back to, uh, Mary Cunningham.
All right. I just want to say thank you again for allowing us this time to speak with you. Um, we all know that you hear from a lot of people, and they talk to you, and they bring a lot of complex issues to you, but we just appreciate you listening to us today. Um, and we ask that next time you talk to our representative, you just mention something about House Bill 172 and tell them vote no. And, um, this is a learning experience for us, and so we just really appreciate the time to be able to advocate for ourselves, because that's not something that all youth have the privilege to do, and we're very privileged to be here today and speak in front of you. Um, and so thank you for your time and the work that you do in the community, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Are you, uh, okay to take some comments and questions?
Yeah.
That sounded right. So can I be just transparent with you? This is probably something that I would be pretty resistant to, just going to be honest, until I heard your compelling argument, until I really have to think that not every family is like my family. It would, it would devastate me that one of my kids would seek mental health without me knowing, because I'm for mental health, and I want them to be in counseling if they need it. But I know I'm abnormal when it comes to a lot of our students and, and their families that they encounter. So I appreciate you making this case, and, and like I said, I would be, normally I'd be sitting here pretty resistant to it, but as I continue to listen, it, it really changes my mind and how this needs to be approached, and not just a broad brush law that would cause all students not to be able to get, uh, the adequate care they need and have a, a listening ear, a professional, uh, ear, that they can actually stop maybe harming themselves in one way. And also, when you were talking about, you know, like, a, a peer would offer another peer a vape or whatever, a drug or whatever, it's, you know, obviously, it's not just that drug, but it's a connection with that person, and, and healthy connection with that person. I know I got a miseducator over here, she'll have a couple, bunch of comments, but I don't see it daily. I don't see it, I know, but I don't see it daily like a lot of people do. Uh, but I do appreciate this, and, and I continue to, uh, speak well and speak your fight, and I appreciate it. Other commissioners have comments?
Um, yeah, go ahead, Bridget. I'm just, I'm dying. But go ahead.
You're ready to go. Um, I, I completely agree with Mayor Rue. Uh, at first, I was a little resistant to this as well, thinking, uh, I want to be involved in all of my children's care. Um, however, you did make a really compelling case, um, regarding the differences in, in just lifestyles and parenting that we see and why that's so important. And then I'd, I'd also just like to commend you for being here. Um, at, at your age, you guys are all so impressive, and you're incredible speakers. So, um, thanks for being involved in this as well.
Absolutely.
So I'm really excited for you guys. One, it takes so much nerve to come and speak in settings like this, and you guys have already done it at the State House. Um, I can tell that you guys put a lot of effort in, and you're very knowledgeable about this topic. And as someone that was a teacher in Springfield City Schools, that became a behavior specialist, shout out to Scott Dixon in the back for creating that role for our district, and then now a special education administrator, and most of the students that I work with and families that I work with every single day are the families that you guys are talking about. And there are oftentimes so much harm being done to students or young children in the home itself, that it is seems, it would be unreasonable to think that their parent would be okay with them going out and sharing this information about the harm that's being caused or the trauma that's constantly going on at home, right? I also want to make sure that you guys are aware of, this is all a part of the backlash of wokeness, right? We want to make sure that parents have rights over their kids. So i- it's so much more complex than just thinking that, oh, we don't want our kids to go to school and be able to get mental health therapy, because then it could lead to, God forbid, some other sort of medical procedure that maybe a parent would not be knowledgeable of. But those are two very vastly different things, and as Rob was saying, it's being swept together like it's one, under one big bill. So I, I cannot tell you guys how excited that I am that you have the understanding that you have and sharing that with our community. And I hope and I pray that, that your words will fall on the ears of community members to understand that these types of bills are not making America great again. Uh, you know, it's not a part of all of those things. It is just a part of individuality and the complexities of each person, instead of just thinking of all of these things as somehow doing harm to the fabric of our America's system. So I appreciate you guys so very much.
Thank you. Dr. Ashraf?
I'm a former American government teacher. And now an elected official. And all of you have made my day, if not my week, and perhaps even my month, because you're demonstrating what this country is all about. You did your homework, you researched this topic, you debated among yourselves and discussed among yourselves this topic. And then you went beyond that to advocate, both at the State House and now in front of us. And as Commissioner Brown pointed out, we know it's not easy for people to appear before us sometimes, but you did. And that's the heart of what makes our country great. People willing to do their homework, willing to talk about the issue at hand, research it, decide a position, and then advocate for it. All I wish for you is the very best, and continue to move forward and make this country great. Thank you all very, very much.
Uh, just, just again, a thank you. I've got to, uh, attend some of your events, and I'm very impressed with the program. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, guys, for your, um, positive leadership and influence you have in this community, not just with kids, but with adults. So, um, I did want to ask, did you say how other folks can get involved, or where we can get information, where we want to support the BATS community?
Uh, yeah. So a great way to get involved with BATS, we have a website, uh, called BATS Youth Lead. If you search that up, it'll be the first website that popped up, talks about who we are, who our sponsors are, what events we host. That's a great way, because all, most of our events are for the public to enjoy and to experience. Uh, as far as with the bill in specific, a great way to, to research bills, if you're in, if people are interested in doing that, is to search up, uh, General Assembly, uh, that'll take you to a website where you can just type in House Bill 172, and it'll take you to all the sponsors of the bill, the, all the, uh, language of the bill. It's really easy to look through it. And, uh, the best way to support, uh, is to support the, um, our, our advocate, advocacy in, in opposition of the bill is to, uh, contact your senators, your representatives, uh, and to provide testimony, like, uh, there was just a deadline for testimony today. So unfortunately, that may not be a possibility, but of course, just communicating with anybody that you know to spread the word.
Do the BATS have an event coming up this holiday season? Is there anything you want to?
Our next big event will be in the spring, um, which will be premiere, The Problem Positive. It's a film festival that we do at the, in the state theater. Uh, that will probably be our next, like, big event. It's really awesome. Students sign up to create a film, um, on some sort of issue that they're really passionate about, and then it's open to the community. Uh, but then also, like Emerson kind of just touched on, tomorrow, actually, these three gentlemen will be going to the State House again to be giving opposing testimony to House Bill 172. And it was very short notice, in the past day, um, we wrote testimony to go tomorrow. So a round of applause for them for going and doing that tomorrow, and tell them good luck.
Amazing. I do have one more comment. I, Beth, I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to you. The work and all of the things that you do to pour into every child in this county and beyond for all of those years, just, if you know Beth Dixon, to know her is a blessing. You, you just never stop. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Hey, if we could ask you a favor, can we gather over here and get a picture with you and, and everyone? That'd be great. Thank you. And then we'll begin our formal meeting, which there is no applause during formal meetings, just informal. Thank you, Crystal.
Um, do we want to do an adjournment?
Yeah, you want to adjourn the, uh, let's go ahead and adjourn the work session?
We need a motion.
Is there a motion for that?
Second.
It's been moved in second. A clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Ashraf?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Hey, thank you for your patience. The formal meeting for city commissions called to order. Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Ashraf?
Here.
Doc, Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Father, I just thank you for, uh, the young leaders that were before us tonight, and I ask God for the youth in our community, that there would be peace and wisdom, and that you would just give them the love that they need to grow and have a healthy life. In your name, amen.
Is there a motion to approve minutes?
Done.
Okay.
It's been moved in seconded. Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
She's left.
Dr. Ashraf?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
The city commission remains committed to creating a conducive environment for constructive and productive dialogue and, and engagement for the community. Those wishing to speak need to fill out a comment card and provide their name and address for the record. State-issued ID and driver's license must be provided when filling out the card, and those residing in Springfield and Clark County will be the only ones permitted to speak during the public comment period. Comment cards will be accepted 15 minutes into after the start of the meeting, of the formal legislative meeting. Those who are determined to have provided false information on the card will not be permitted to speak at this meeting or the next regularly scheduled meeting. We're truly committed to making sure that the meeting is an environment where people have an opportunity to share their ideas, thoughts, and concerns. While we fully respect First Amendment rights, all of the individuals, uh, of all individuals, disruptions- disruptions or any conduct that impedes the orderly progress of the meeting will not be tolerated. Those, any, should any individual be escorted or asked to leave due to disruptive behavior on three separate occasions, they'll be notified that they're considered trespass, apart from attending for, any further city commission meetings. With that, we'll begin with Melissa Rexroth. Thank you.
Melissa Rexroth, my first question goes back a few weeks. It's regarding the parks. I was wondering when the City of Springfield told the property that Littleton Rue is on to the funeral home, Littleton Rue, did the proceeds go to the National Trail Parks and Recreation District as proposed by the city in honor of Mrs. Littleton? If so, what was that amount? Regarding Resolution 5844, I am for the second time formally requesting the commission rescind that resolution. The commission has stated it expired and stated it is not active. However, resolutions are indeed active unless there is an expiration date on them, which this one does not, has been rescinded, or if it is superseded. Since the commission states it is not active, it should be a unanimous vote to rescind. A few weeks ago, Brian stated the Executive Inn and Villager Inn were purchased with general funds. In 2022, Brian stated they were purchased with ARCA funds. Could you please clarify? Regarding Springfield 2051, for the city's long-term vision, you hope to have city and county combined. The gentleman running the 2051 alluded to that effect and stated if we didn't want that, that we needed to do something to stop it because things were happening quick. The city has stated they have nothing to do with Springfield 2051, however, there was a resolution passed to give $50,000 to them. $25,000 has already been paid, and the next $25,000 will be paid next year. That gives the appearance of being involved. Dwyane has announced another data center coming to Springfield. This one is Constant Company LLC, which is a cloud infrastructure provider. These are typically referred to as paper-scaled data centers designed to support shared global use. They use two to four times more electricity and 30 times more water than a traditional data center. What is the city doing to protect the citizens from increasing electric and water prices, as well as power outages and limiting water? What kind of cooling system will this data center? Sheriff Clark states Springfield hasn't increased the violent crimes by 128%. I cited that at a previous meeting, and City of Springfield responded on Facebook saying that reporting has changed by adding detail, and that it only appears increased. Could you please explain how adding detail makes the number of crimes appear to increase? On October 29th, I called the police to ask about FOIA requests for phone calls made to the police. I was told to contact the sheriff. The sheriff told me to contact the police, and the police then told me to contact the sheriff. It's been three weeks, and I still don't have any information. My mom and I had witnessed a hit-and-run, followed the perpetrator, and called the police. The police said there was no victim and no crime, so they didn't need the information. How did they know that the victim wasn't going to call? The sheriff says people don't bother calling or reporting crime, and now I can see why. A bigger jail will not change the way the sheriff and the police respond to crime. Lastly, what is the forum for discussion?
Thank you. Joe Morris? Michael Morris, Joe Morris. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to talk to you about the growing epidemic of stray neglected, driving and abandoned community cats, not just in the state of Ohio, but specifically Clark County. Not only is there lack of funding to help trap and release the cats, but it's also such an overpopulation that there's nowhere them, nowhere for them to go because all the shelter sanctuaries are full within hundreds of miles. A new amendment to the Ohio Revised Code in October 24, Section 959.111 states stray cats are now classified as companion, regardless of where they are kept. Can we work together to help these animals? This is my. Many people are not able to feed their own families, much less pets that they have. They're dumping them in our community parks, apartment complexes, and mobile home parks, where they are left starving, freezing, and without shelter. I'm pleading with the city to look into not only helping these cats firstly by providing more affordable veterinary resources to the public, low-cost spay and neuter clinic, secondly, expanding funding for local trap and release programs, and thirdly, providing some shelter locally for these animals if that's possible. The situation is only going to get worse. We need to be proactive. It's gotten so bad with the stray cat population and abandoned animals that some local mobile home park owners are threatening to evict people that feed them, and they tell them they will soon be euthanizing all the pet parks due to overpopulation and the issues that come with that. This is illegal now in the state of Ohio. According to ORC, Section 959 dot 1.3, no person shall torture an animal, drive one unnecessary sustenance, unnecessarily, cruelly beat, needlessly mutilate, or kill it. I plead with the council to not only help rectify this alarming situation, but to let my group continue to TNR and humanely help rehome these animals in our community, especially in the mobile home park. Could you please help us communicate to the mobile home park owners that euthanizing these cats is not only illegal in the state of Ohio, but due to the vacuum effect, other cats will dispropulate the park? TNR is the only humane solution in these parks, and we need your support. Give us the time to complete our mission. We have information to help you from the Springfield, Ohio animal advocates that we'd like to share, and we would appreciate any assistance you could give us.
Thank you.
Every day I tell customer service people, yes, we're the town that eats cats. I think that woman proved that we don't eat the cats because we, she said we have an influx, and I think that's probably true. Those children that got up here changed my whole train, for the first time I agreed with everybody, including Rob, that said everything. That is heartbreaking and heartrending, that we know, you know, years ago, I read that four out of five girls were molested by their parents. You know, when children are held hostage by parents that are druggies, abusive, psychotics, mentally ill people, that they have nowhere to go. Doesn't that rack your soul? Only if you have no compassion, would it? And would the left and the right use that as a commercial? Oh, they want to control your kids. They lie about, yeah, the kids can go to school and ask for a sex change. No, they can't. They got to be 18 years old, you fools. That's stupid. Why are we so stupid as a society that we believe the lives of many people today that are on the airwaves now, like I've not seen in my 75 years? It's hysterically heartbreaking, heartbreaking. I don't dislike any of you, even though a few of you that I know never tell the truth, or hardly ever do, or don't serve to serve anybody but yourselves, because service is about serving the people that voted for you, not yourselves. These children, if we don't support them, nine out of 10 of us, you should pick that up today and go with that. And let me get back to some of the other things. Melissa brought it up. Yes, many times I've listened. One minute it's federally funded, listen, this is coming from COVID money. Next minute, he's saying, oh, it's in the general funds. And I'm going, Melissa says the same things I've been listening to for three years. They don't seem to tell the truth. What I want to do know is how many people walked those hotels and verified the 78 rooms and 144? You said you had zoning? You said you had your zoning. They don't, we know what the zoning is. Did you ever building people do the report? I want to, I want to know the report. Today, I want to know the report, what it said, how many units you had, because you told the appraiser that you had 144, but that wasn't true. Because your two partners, Homeford and Sheltered Inc., wouldn't be partners because they knew they were devastating junk, which I told you three years ago without any knowledge when I got up to just rat on Mr. Former Commissioner that has full-time people, doesn't take taxes, is getting water at the commercial rate, and how many, I want to know how many units are getting commercial water because he's added another eight units on the two that face across from the Hickory Inn? Are you for that? Are you for cutting the city out of what they should be getting, paying the proper rate for what they receive? I pay double what I paid, and I'm one man living in a duplex that I haven't rented out for five years. That isn't fair to the city and the other people that live by the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Clara Copeland?
Hi. A week ago yesterday, when we woke, woke up the snowstorm, I was on grandma duty, and so I had to take kid to the high school. And I didn't realize how much snow there was when I was brushing it off of my car. But when I got out on my street, it was cleared off. The streets in Springfield were clear, and I went all the way up Limestone, all the way to the high school, and it was clear. And I want to thank you and the people who obviously got out there to clear those streets. Later in the morning, my son has to drive south of Dayton for his job, and he wrote to his wife and me and said, don't go out, the roads are terrible. Not in Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob Putten, Putman?
Good evening. I always like to start off with some quotes. Power is dangerous, it corrupts the best, and attracts the worst. It's only given to those willing to lower themselves to pick it up. Group of kids that were here earlier, I think they are a smart group of kids, and I think they're going to do great things as long as they continue to do it, so my hat's off to them. It's been almost a year since I first spoke here, where I challenged you all to think about what you want to be remembered by and where you're going to leave behind. I know some of you guys are willing, are going to be putting up your seats, and new ones are going to be coming in, and I challenged them with that same question. The only thing I want to know is, after hearing federal spend, spending out of all these meetings, how do we go from having roads torn up for over a year, but yet we can have multiple roads suddenly being fixed within two weeks, such as Bechtel here is recently? That's really all I have. Thank you.
Ann Edders? Ann? I'm having a hard time reading your last name. I'm sorry. Peters. It was just hard for me to read. See? Sorry, Ms. Peters. Thank you.
I'm extremely concerned with education, employment opportunities, quality mental health, and homelessness services in Springfield. But today I am here to tell you what I can't unsee and what I can't ignore. The repeated suffering of overpopulated cats due to illness, disease, injury, and abuse, which are extremely graphic and disturbing, I can share these details after the meeting. The overpopulation attracts some Springfield community members that I know and I'm aware of to take matters into their own hands by killing cats without regards to ordinances or laws. Again, I deleted the details of how they are doing this and can share that also after today's meeting. I have been spaying and neutering cats in my neighborhood for 20 years. I am thankful that once I knew TNR existed, trap, neuter, and return, they also helped me. I'm not part of a licensed organization. I spay, neuter, and vaccinate because that's how you manage overpopulation. It's best practice to trap, neuter, and return to manage overpopulation. Not everyone allows trap or neuter and return to assist, and without breeding prevention, cat colony illness, disease, injury, and abuse increases. Manage the breeding and end the suffering. Provide places for these sentient creatures to live instead of a living, instead of living a horrific life. Because they are overpopulated, colonies form, mass feeding occurs, and nuisance, nuisance is developed. A female cat ovulates every time she mates. Female feline gestation is two months, and typical litters are four to six kittens. In one year, a female cat can have 30 kittens. If 30 unspayed cats each have 30 kittens, that's 900 cats in one year. Private vets charge hundreds of dollars for spay and neuter, which is an outrage to people with limited income. We need more low-cost spay and neuter options. We need shelters. We need to normalize trap, neuter, vaccine, and return, and we need to increase these best practices in vulnerable communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Cindy Barton?
I, too, would like to commend the students that were here. I'm glad that they're taking initiative. I'm, I'm glad they're seeing the warnings and the troubles that can come and rise from if not getting complete help or having anybody for them. I think every child should have someone to depend on, to be able to feel secure with, and to. Which leads me to the issues that they are bringing to the table of all the youth decisions, the mental health, physical health, the physical, the mental health. I'm a very big advocate for mental health. I suffer from mental health myself, so I know how discouraging it can feel if you don't have the help. Takes a lot to get it, takes a lot of nerve to get it, lot, takes a lot of, I guess you would say stigma to it that goes with it. And now that we're seeing a, it's, it's more welcome, not well, vicious, it's more open, it's more talked about. And I'm very proud of these kids for getting up here and, kudos to them. I'm glad they did the research. I am glad that they have studied. I am glad that that is our future in looking out for everybody. I hope that one day maybe all of them will be in your seat, leading us. I also would like to acknowledge that, as Mr. Estrop had mentioned, that, you know, the research and the numbers and the documentations and everything hold power, holds a lot of mighty power to it, and when presented in an accurate form, it can be very, very damaging to one side or the other. This isn't about a left or right policy. This is about a city that is torn apart, torn apart by the devastations of the influx. So that will lead me to my question of what are we going to do when the immigrants leave? You had a plan for them to come here. Will there be an open forum or a meeting on their departure? And what to expect? What areas we need to abide by? I'm asking for, you know, guidance on this, because I know it'll probably be very hectic. The one meeting on December 4th, is that open to the public, or is that for immigrants only? We would like to be able to understand what is the process also, and as a community, we are, should be privileged to that information also. So today I am standing here in black for the ones that cannot speak here, who are afraid to speak here, who are lost, or we have lost, for those people that have fought the fight and proved to you all the documentation, the research, the numbers, and are done now.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I'll start with your card. Want to reemphasize over and over again that the city had no formal plan to bring immigrants in our community. We keep saying that, we've tried to tell you, but we tell you the truth, and we're called liars, but that's the truth. The December 4th event's put on by the NAACP, I believe it's St. John's Missionary Baptist. It's open to the public, my knowledge, so encourage you to go, because as a group, we're trying to figure out what is going to happen, and that is a mystery to us as well. It really is. I've been in two meetings this week trying to figure out what is going to happen, and even some high-up folks can't really tell us the answer, and it's pretty frustrating. And so, that's, okay. Go back to Mr. Rexroth, because I happen to know a lot about that. So in 1931, Littleton became a funeral home there at 830 North Limestone by the Littletons, 31. It was operated from a funeral home until Mr. Littleton died by his hand in 19, he didn't die by his hand, sorry, guys. He died in 1974, and Mrs. Littleton lived there till 1986. That time, the property was sold or given to the city to stay at the funeral home forever. Okay, that's in the lease agreement. In 2016, 15, we actually approached the city to buy it. The lease on the property was a triple net lease for $500 a month forever, till 2044. Okay? And so for us to invest and maintain that property the way it is, we need to have equity in that property, so we asked the city to purchase, before as a commissioner, to purchase the property, so we can invest in the property. If you drive fair, as we have, we keep it up, and we also put a two and a half million dollar building on that property. The only way we're going to be able to invest in that property, maintain that core, is to be able to own the property. The city at the time agreed, we went through all the legal matters to The city at the time agreed, we went through all the legal matters to, to get the property and made sure that the funds that were, that we purchased the property for, which was $440,000, was going to go to where Ms. Littleton would like to have gone, which is the parks. Now that lease over the life of it from 2016 to 2044 would have generated $150,000 to the city. So we bought the property for more than what we could have just continued to maintain it. So thanks for bringing that up. That was all public and I believe the purchase had to be voted on here anyway, did it not? That I was not a part of that vote. But so anyway, my commitment to the city as a business owner is to maintain the property the way you see it and continue to make it a flourishing business or community to help people. So that's your long answer for one I'm very familiar with. So I hope that answers your question in the entirety it needed to be. The two ladies that spoke about the cats and I just appreciate your compassion. I mean, I have a cat that we took in, we did not buy. So, you know, I get it. But thanks for your compassion. Other comments from commissioners?
I do. I want to speak to the ladies about the cats. I had no idea about any of that. And I absolutely love my dog. So he was a rescue as well, but I had, would have not known, being like not a cat person, right? And not, not impacting me, right? So thank you for that information.
Doctor Aspro. You better talk to the microphone.
I wanted to report on federal government funding. As you know, the government has reopened. The good news is we have received our federal community development money for 2025, the current year. For 2026, we still don't know what those appropriations are going to be. The United States House of Representatives has one option. The United States Senate has another option. And President Trump has yet a third option. Now, what will become of the three options? We have no idea. But that's one of the things, among many others that are on the news right now, that apparently are we hopeful the federal government, particularly the House, the Senate are working on to come to a compromise so we can begin to look forward to 2026 funding. Thank you.
I have a few things to address. I want to recognize that the Mental Health Recovery Board of Clark Green in Madison County is who funds the BATS programs. So kudos to them. Please continue to support their efforts. TNR, I have been a part of several fundraisers over the years to help with that. Recently, I have befriended a vet, a vet that actually comes in from out of town and comes in one Sunday a month into Clark County, parks on the west side. They set up a whole tent and takes care of homeless animals. The homeless bring their pets and their animals to her and she does healthcare for them for their animals. If you would like that resource, I can make that connection for you. Just email me at ttackett@springfieldohio.gov. Continuing on with some resources. Thank you to Logan Cobb's for helping me gather some of the Thanksgiving meals and Springfield resources. I'm gonna kind of share these out with everyone. And then there's more information on my commissioner page. Life Untethered, you can go to lifeuntethered.org. They have a sign up by November 24th. They're going to have a drive through pickup at Studebaker's. The hours will be eight to 12. You'll need to present a name with an ID. Fellowship Spring Hill, that would be fellowshipchristian.org/events/food-pantry/. That would be November 22nd. And the hours will be 10 to 12. That is 2301 Valley Loop Road in Springfield. This is Thanksgiving outreach for citizens who will be putting Thanksgiving bags together and those who will be given out, and those will be given out at the food pantry. A turkey is included as long as supplies last. Cook at home option, food not already prepared. Number three, North Ridge United Methodist Church, veterans and families, November 27th, 12:30 to 3:00. This is 4610 Durham Road, Springfield. Dine in, carry out or delivered, must call ahead to register. There are food pantries day before Thanksgiving on the 26th. Number one, St. John's, nine to 10:45 a.m. That's 27 North Wittenberg Avenue. Number two, family needs 10 to 12. That would be 36 East Grand Avenue in Dumas? Dumase? 9:30 to 11 a.m. That's 34 West Pleasant Street, also in Springfield. Food pantries two days before Thanksgiving on the 25th, open hands, 10 to 12. That's 151 South Bird Road. I also want to share that the SBDC is doing a food drive drop off at 100 South Limestone. They're asking for things like mac and cheese, spaghetti, rice, canned veggies, et cetera. I also want to share out that from October 20th to November 21st, you can register for Christmas toys. This is for ages zero to 17 years old. You're going to need a proof of residency. It's the BCU Food Pantry, New Carlisle. Family Youth Initiatives, also New Carlisle and Children's Rescue Center in Springfield. And then one other thing I want to share out, oh, two things. In regards to housing instability, the library is hosting a film screening. It would be this Thursday, November 20th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's the main library. There is a documentary that's actually created out of Dayton, Ohio. I've already screened it and I'll be a part of a panel discussing it and getting updates from our health department to share out. So that's this Thursday, November 20th, 4:00 to 6:00 at the library about evictions and housing instability. Last thing I want to share, it's a big one. I want to give a shout out to Myers Market, the Sheriff's Department, Cohatch, and of course, my business. This is the second year we've done a blessing bag drive, or second year with Cohatch and I doing a blessing bag drive. This will be Friday, November 28th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. So it's during Holiday in the City hours. We'll be in Cohatch collecting items for the homeless and to take to our shelters. So this will be again, 5:00 to 8:00 inside Cohatch. We're going to collect donations for our local shelter during Holiday in the City. You can also scan, there are flyers at both podiums. It's also on my social media page, the commissioner page. You can scan to just do a donation straight to Sheltered Inc. on there. Some of the items we're looking for, and also in addition to the items, you can drop them off at Cohatch all week, next week or this week. They already have a collection area in front of the doors. So you don't have to come to Holiday in the City to bring items. You can, you can just drop it off during their business hours. But some of the items that we're looking for are the gallon baggies, new socks, new gloves, scarves, coats, hygiene essentials, toothpaste, toothbrushes, floss, body wash, chapstick, soap, shampoo, sanitizer, deodorant, wash gloss, hand warmer, sanitary products, hot and cold reusable bottles, laundry detergent, granola bars, and even a Christmas card of encouragement. So again, second year that we've done this during Holiday in the City. Want to thank the Sheriff's Partner, Sheriff's Department for partnering with me again this year and Cohatch and Myers Market. That is all.
Excellent. Some of those, some of those events you read on the first list would be good to have on the city's social media, especially where food and things like that, maybe do a bullet point list.
I was just wondering Tracy, if you could take a picture of your list?
Yeah.
And maybe share it on your socials?
Yeah.
And so that we can share it as well.
She has good handwriting.
Thank you.
And I do know, Commissioner, we do plan to post similar information on our outstanding website.
Is there anything, I didn't ask you first, is there anything you want to answer from the comments from our residents that we're able to answer or that answers, we need to get back to them?
Yeah, a couple of things, did you want to?
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to ask to, to address, there was a question about the data center and then the discrepancy in road repairs. I don't, I want to make sure we don't forget those questions. But I just have one thing. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the Salvation Army, the Angel Tree Bag. They are out, there are literally hundreds of bags this year that still need claimed. So basically you pick up a tag and there's a description, you can buy a gift for a child in need. It's an amazing program. They've been doing it for a long time, if you're not familiar. You can get the tags at local businesses. I know like O'Conner's has them or the Salvation Army. And just for the record, I will read their phone number if you would like to call. It's 937-322-3434. And these are due back at the fairgrounds on December 8th and 9th. So I have like 10 extra ones up here if anyone wants to grab one tonight.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, so several different things and I wrote down, so hopefully don't miss. But first of all, as, as it relates to the purchase of the hotels, if you look at under fund accounting, yes, the purchase would have come from the general fund, from the actual purchase, but that was made possible by the ability of the American Rescue Plan Act, which is federal dollars for revenue replacement, which allows some of those ARPA dollars to go into our general fund, which made it possible to purchase that. So the actual purchase would have shown up from the general fund, but again, made possible by those American Rescue Plan Act dollars and their revenue replacement side. As far as Springfield 2051, I don't know who has said that we aren't involved at all in it. We have said that we have done 50,000 to that. Staff has participated. I think where the, maybe the misnomer is, we are not the lead of that. We have not taken the lead. We're not the lead of the group. We did not hire the consultant. We did contribute, as did many organizations, foundations, the state of Ohio, the county, city, towards the project, but we are not leading the project. Again, we have participated. I've attended think tank sessions. I've attended other planning sessions that they've held. I know numerous staff has, and so has been engaged and involved just like that, but we're just not leading that effort. On the police data, I was going to have Allison speak to that and the change in the reporting system.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. And good evening, Mayor Rue, Commissioner. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity because I think it's important that we provide context and there are a lot of questions surrounding the switch to the uniform crime reporting to the national incident based reporting system. So try to give you a brief overview of that change. I know we tried to put some information out, but it always, doesn't always provide the full context. So back in 2020, going into 2021, January of 21, Chief Graf at the time recognized that the, the way the FBI was reporting and asking for crime statistics to be reporting was changing from the uniform crime reporting system to the national incident based reporting system. So they were going to retire the uniform crime reporting system, which means they were changing to the NIBR system. And Chief Graf recognized that and we actually changed platforms and how we reported our statistics and our data as far as crimes. What that meant is we switched to a system through the state of Ohio called OLEG, the Ohio Law Enforcement Gateway. It's a state database that many other agencies take part in, participate in. So we started doing our reporting through that system. And with that system, they automatically then report our data. They pull our data from OLEG through the Department of Public Safety and they report that through OIBRs, which is the Ohio Incident Based Reporting System. And then that information from the OIBRs gets uploaded to NIBR. So we do not report that. It does not change our hands. Essentially, once it gets reported into the OLEG system, then it gets pulled directly through OIBRs, their Ohio Incident Based Reporting System, and then it goes to NIBRs to be reported through the FBI's new system. So what does that mean and why is that? Why could that be a little confusing? Because I do remember and I appreciate Ms. Rexroth's question because she, I specifically recall back at the last time she had this question, she specifically referenced 2020 and 2021 and why, why we're starting to see this shift and this increase. It's not to say that things did not increase and change did not happen as far as increase in crimes, but with this reporting system change, the NIBR system reports on far more offenses than the uniform crime reporting system. So for instance, the uniform crime reporting system counts eight major offenses that you would report on, that you would focus on, whereas NIBR's captures 24. So you start to see additional data. It's not to say these, these incidents did not occur previously. It's just a more accurate, detailed context behind the crimes that are occurring. And the best way that I can try to help break this down is, say we respond to a call that has a murder, a robbery and a stolen vehicle, or an aggravated robbery in a stolen vehicle. Previously with the UCR, you would report the highest offense, which would, they would take as the murder, being the offense that would be shared on to the UCR system. Doesn't mean that those additional crimes did not occur during that incident. However, the way it was reported and sent through the system did not give an actual accurate depiction. So NIBRs took a look at that and they understood, we need to understand how we can capture more information for victims and survivors and paint a better context as what is actually happening in these communities. So additionally, when we started reporting into that NIBR system, you started to see an increase in offenses being reported naturally because it captured more data. But it was, hopefully, you know, their goal was to capture more accurate data of what was going on in communities. So you did see that spike and you did see that increase. Now again, that doesn't mean that things didn't change or ebb and flow within our own community, but I, I know that they did anticipate that. And the other thing to understand, to get a good, solid understanding on this data, we're coming up roughly on the five year mark now. We're approaching the five year mark to have that solid five year data that we can analyze and kind of look at from the previous years. So I think it gives us a better opportunity now that we're starting to settle into that system.
Thank you.
And I also, I would also like to add, anytime, I'm happy to follow up with some questions. I know there was some frustrations expressed with Ms. Rexroth and her situation on contacting the county and then contacting us. I'd love to clear that up if I can or get her in the right direction. Anytime anybody has questions, I come here and our staff is typically here, you'll see them present. So please come to us if the community has questions and they come here, we would love to try to help, you know, provide accurate information to avoid misinformation. Thank you.
And I was actually going to comment that either after the meeting, on the one incident, you talked about the hit and run, getting some more detail after the meeting, either with Allison, myself, whatever that is, just to help understand what happened and understand the confusion that happened by you having, we don't want you to have to reach out to multiple agencies and get moved around. We want you to be able to get to one person and be able to get the answer you need. One of the questions too was relative to roads. I think kind of in the context of, you know, we've seen a lot of paving over the last couple of weeks. Just going to have Chris Moore, one, speak to that. Certainly, we would all love to see the roads paved throughout the year. Some of it's a timing issue with the funding source and everything. But if Chris could speak to that, but then also just some greater context on our road program in general.
Thanks, Brian. So we have, we have seen a lot of paving in the last month or so. And a big reason for that is the way our funding comes in, the state fiscal year ends and begins midsummer. And a lot of these projects are funded by the state of Ohio and the Ohio Public Works Commission. So we can did the project prior to that date, but we cannot award the project until after July 1st. And once it's awarded, we have two options to hopefully get it done this calendar year or wait until the next year. In many cases, if we wait until the next year, the contractor's pricing is no longer good. So that's why you've seen Bechtel Avenue, Villa Road were both paved recently. South Belmont was paved fairly recently. If you go back to earlier in the season, South Fountain was finished up very early in the season. South the other Spring Street was finished very early in the season. And then throughout the early, late September, early October, our own crews went out and paved about 10 roads and those were done in a good part of the year. So that is the reason you've seen a lot of activity recently is primarily due to the funding cycles. When we think about, we've had questions about how, how do you pick the roads and why isn't this road getting done? I cannot do a deep dive in the time we have, but I can give you a little bit of context. The first thing we have to look at is where has the gas company been and where are they going? The gas company is mandated to replace their steel lines. If they have not been there to replace their steel lines, we do not want to go and repave the road only to have them dig it up because they, they don't have an option. They have to go back and dig it up. Once we have worked our way through what the gas company has done, we look at our pavement condition rating. We have a third party agency rate all of our streets. So now we have a map, we can lay which roads the gas company have done, along with which roads are in the worst condition. Then we have to start looking at our utilities. We have mandates. We have mandates from Ohio EPA to reduce combined sewer overflows and replace lead water service lines. We need to make sure that those mandates are not gonna conflict with the road project. After we work through that, we need to look at the, what is, what else is going on around? Uh, for example, we're going to be doing a major project on South Limestone over the next 18 months. We wanna make sure that South Fountain is done before South Limestone. We wanna make sure we're not doing anything that's terribly disruptive to the site streets around South Limestone, just to avoid, um, added congestion in that area. We also look at, uh, large projects. A few years ago, an example is Bill Edwards Drive needed paved. We knew that and Wittenberg said, we're gonna build a new building. We waited a year. We let them build their building, then we repaved the road because we did not want that new road to get all the heavy construction traffic. Those are just five or six of the, really the 20 plus different things we look at when we look at paving a road. Um, I can tell you, I would love to see every road done, um, but there has to be a method to the madness because we don't wanna make an investment and then go around and have that investment dug up.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, we did go admittedly nine years, I think 2009 through 2018, where we were not able financially, we did not pave neighborhood streets. And with the passage of the, the levy in 2017, there was a commitment to restarting that neighborhood street program with a minimum of $2 million, uh, every year going to neighborhood streets. And I'm, I'm happy to report we have hit that and beyond, uh, each and every year in terms of those neighborhood streets, but are we close to being done? No. And, and we know that we're gonna keep plugging away. We're gonna keep paving those neighborhood streets. Uh, certainly, uh, the cost pressures on that, uh, we've seen that double just here in the recent last three years where it was a shave and pave was $300,000 a, a mile to 600,000. So it's, it's doubled, uh, but we're gonna keep going and we're gonna keep trying to, to make up. And again, we have nine plus years to make up for. Uh, so we're gonna keep doing that on our roadways. Um, as far as it relates to, uh, there were questions as, uh, concerning the data center. I was gonna have Chris speak to that too on the water usage and so forth.
Thanks, Brian. I, I will, I'll speak to the water and then our, um, Tom Franzen will, will speak to just the data center itself because it's a, it's a unique arrangement. So, uh, as far as the data center that's being, that's currently under construction, they will use the closed, closed loop system, um, for their cooling, which means their wastewater discharges.
Please don't interrupt, please Melissa.
Say that, uh, just so I had the context, you're talking. Yeah, that's, it is the same data center. So 5C DC, 5C DC builds out a large.
Melissa, why don't you go ahead to the microphone so we can talk this through? Let's, you're welcome to, please.
Tom, if you wanna just speak to that, so 5C DC is a.
Yeah, there's confusion around that, whether it's a standalone data center or not, but no 5C DC, what Chris is talking about, the utilities that were analyzed to make service appropriately are in place. And basically they built out a shell, right? The infrastructure, uh, to house data, cloud storage. And so we expect to hear a series of, of, of opportunities related to companies that are gonna lease space in that data. So that's what that is not much detail that we care beyond that, but that's what, uh, on information referencing from Governor Dewine.
From a, from a water perspective, whether it's a data center or any user, when they come, we analyze, um, both the quality and the quantity of what they're going to be using and discharging because we do not want super high strength sewage coming out of anywhere and we do not want any one user to overtax our system. So, uh, th- this data center, we use a closed loop system and under really all circumstances, their wastewater discharge will be limited to restrooms and a sink. The, the water that cools it, um, if they, if, if they lose any water through that, it's the evaporation and it will be replenished. They anticipate only needing to, to really ramp up water usage when the temperatures are between 85 and 95 degrees and the humidity is up. They, um, they realize that, uh, all of these centers want to minimize their usage because there's a cost to it. So a, a big day for that data center would be 300,000 gallons per day. That's the, the number we've been given. Put that into perspective, we pump about nine million gallons per day. We have the ability to very easily pump an 18 million gallons per day. And this data center would be roughly our fourth biggest water user. Uh, that it would be about around between the third and the fourth biggest, biggest water user in our system.
Chris, I think it's also interesting from the budget hearing we just had that you talked about fixed costs and necessary costs to run our water system.
Yes.
And what we're running and what capacity is and what, yeah, just continue, just want you to talk about that real quick.
Because there, there are a lot of fixed costs when it comes to water treatment and water distribution, but really water treatment, because we, we have to have the same amount of people present 24/7, whether we pump 3 million gallons or 18 million gallons. So when we have an increase like this with one user, we do not have to, we do not have to add staff for that. The amount of chemicals used to produce an extra 300,000 gallons are, are minimal. And the, the pumping really doesn't change very much because we have to turn the water over in our towers every 12 to 24 hours, regardless of usage. We still have to pump water up to the towers, turn the pumps off, let them drain back down. That would be electric costs. So many of the costs are fairly fixed. When you start to add, um, users and especially big users, the, it really helps spread the costs out better. Adding big users can help minimize future rate increases. It doesn't eliminate future rate increases, but it can help minimize those because one big customer is much easier to service and deal with than, um, for example, 4,300 little customers that would equal one big customer.
Yeah, and, and I'll just add, like, uh, Tom had insinuated, we'll probably see some additional announcements like that from the state. So what we saw a couple of weeks ago, I think, is when it was in the paper, was the state was giving incentives to a data, to a data center that's gonna locate in that facility. Um, and we probably will see more announcements like that as the state continues to provide different incentive packages to, uh, the data center. But again, 5C DC is building out that large shell and then they will lease space to these individual data centers that will locate in there. And I think too, just a, a great opportunity, great questions, uh, tonight and appreciate those, uh, bringing those forward and, and talking about the roads and 2051 and all those things. I want people to understand they don't have to wait every two weeks, uh, to come to a meeting. Uh, give us a call, uh, meet with us. I had a citizen yesterday that called and was frustrated about something. He came in and met today and we sat down and talked through his issues. Um, I know there's this misconception out there, uh, from some people that, um, you know, like Citizens Government Academy coming up, that you have to apply to come and speak to me. That's not the case. I want you to call and ask those questions. Uh, let us talk through it and, and give you the answers. Um, you may, at the end of the day, you may still not like the answer that you hear, but that's okay. Uh, but call and reach out. We want you to be able to ask questions and, and have your questions answered. You don't have to wait every two weeks to do that and you don't have to apply or register to, uh, do such. So reach out to my office, nine, three, seven, three, two, four, seven, three, zero, five. Uh, you can email me, bheck@springfieldohio.gov. And if I'm not the appropriate staff person, I will connect you with the appropriate staff person to do such.
Thank you. Is there any other answers? Is that all? Okay, okay. We'll continue with first readings.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to the real estate, re- real estate lease to purchase agreement with EMAAC Properties LLC for the lease, operation and maintenance of Reed Park Golf Course. Authorizing an expenditure up to $1,091,690 to the Board of Clark County Commissioners to obtain communication and dispatch services for the 2026 calendar year. Confirming and approving change order number one to the contract between the city and Bensel Construction Incorporated for, for the runway 1533 Pappy and Power Cable Replacement Project at the Springfield Beckley Municipal Airport to decrease the contract in an amount not to exceed $4,027.50 for a total amount not to exceed $324,925 and authorizing the city manager to execute said change order number one. Accepting the deduction of public utilities and improvements for the Bridgewater subdivision phases two, three, and four. Confirming and approving a development incentive agreement, single family residential development to provide for water services to real property outside the city limits located at 812 Villa Road.
Is there any, uh, comments from commissioners on first readings? Would like you to explain a few if that's all right. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I wanna start with the, the dispatch. So 2058 dash two, five, this is authorizing our annual, uh, dispatch, uh, agreement services for 2026 calendar year. Um, so we pay based off of the number of calls for service. Um, and so we do see, uh, a, we look at it from, um, September 1 through August, uh, 31 of every year. Uh, they look at the calls for service and then there's a formula in the original contract with the county on how we pay for each of those calls for service. Uh, so we did see an increase of 8,367 calls, uh, from, uh, the previous year, which is a 12 and a half percent increase, uh, which that, that did increase our amount. So last year we would have paid 1,008,020. Uh, and as you see from this contract, we're at 1,091 dollars, uh, or 91,690. Um, and so it has increased and that is again, as a result of, uh, increase of calls for service at 12 and a half percent. The largest that we saw, so SPD from the 23 to 24 period, uh, was at 47,237 calls, uh, in the 24, 25 period, which this is looking at is 55,396 calls. So that was where our biggest jump. Fire was pretty stable in terms of the calls for service. Uh, 23, 24 numbers was 19,565 calls for service. And in the 24, 25 number that was utilized, uh, for the contract, 19,773. So much smaller increase there. Uh, we saw that big jump on the, uh, police side. 199 dash two, four, um, the real estate lease to purchase agreement. So approximately 18 months ago, commission entered into a real estate lease to purchase agreement with EMAC Properties, uh, for the lease, operation and maintenance of Reed Park Golf Course, uh, with a date, uh, of the end of 2025 to close on that purchase piece of that. Um, and so, um, if you recall back 2016, I believe, we did an RFP, uh, we leased the golf course operation out to a, a private, uh, group that leased that. They were able in that lease agreement to assign that, uh, to another, uh, company. And with this, we were able to work out the lease to purchase. And this amends this to set, as they purchase that property, those water rates, um, they have a, uh, loan that is dependent on, uh, the, the federal government being open and there was some uncertainty there, uh, of when that would get approved and signed off on. So it allows it to go into the first quarter of next year if they're not able to get that SBA, uh, piece completed. Uh, but this just helps us advance forward, uh, with that purchase at the end of the year, hopefully, and, um, keep golf operations, um, operating in the city of Springfield, but not at the cost of the city itself. And I'm happy to answer questions on any of the other first readings if there are any.
Think I'd like, uh, the chief to come back to the microphone and maybe explain, um, some of the reason for the increase in the call volume since it was so drastic.
Thank you, sir. So just to, uh, capture that increase, uh, some of that is also accounting for self-initiated activity, additional proactive enforcement engagement. So as we've been able to increase our staffing, it had allowed us to increase a number of traffic stuffs that our officers are, um, initiating as well as, uh, the, a, a significant increase there, our business check. So checking, you know, especially during the midnight, midnight hours and things like that, just increasing that visibility and proactive enforcement.
Every time the police do, uh, the staff, police staff does a business check, they engage not the dispatch, right? It's back and forth like.
In the CAD system.
They have a code, they say, go back and forth, I'm doing a business check.
So in that, in that dispatching system, that on the computer, they have the ability to, to put that information in that system to put them out on that, um, check, which captures that data, which again, provides an accurate reflection of what our officers are doing every single day. It shows the additional self-initiated activity, um, in addition to the calls per service initiated by community and citizens.
So increase traffic and increase check.
Yes.
Placing the community, uh, in a more efficient, better way, right?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other comments from commissioners on first readings only? Other comments from the audience on first readings only? Would you like to go to the microphone, Mr. Armstrong?
I'd include the comment on the money going to the airport.
If that's in the first reading, absolutely.
Think it is, yeah.
Uh, 131 dash two, four, this is a contract, uh, that was for the Pappy and Power Cable.
Here's my real question.
Oh.
Exactly what is the relationship? Did we buy the city, Beckley Airport? I assume it was owned by the state or the feds because they had F-16s or whatever. What money are you making and are you in the red? I know local businesses probably saving because they get stuff shipped in closer, but is the city making money for the expenditures they're paying out to maintain the airport and the runways and the property you're buying, et cetera, et cetera?
Great question.
Yeah, I, I can, I'm actually gonna have Tom Franzen come to the mic. Uh, Tom runs, uh, our airport operation.
So, uh, Mr. Armstrong, I probably won't get the history exactly right, but, uh, the way I think it is, the city, uh, purchased that property back in the forties. Uh, they did receive federal funds to do that. It was a backup base to Wright Patterson Airport Base. Um, but you're right, they did, uh, have an Air National Guard mission out there flying F-16s, um, uh, that they have now transitioned to other, other things. But, uh, the airport itself is made up of, of multiple entities. As you know, the Air National Guard Unit, uh, General Aviation Airport, hangars. Uh, there's also advanced air mobility testing going on out there, uh, partnerships with Air Force Research Labs and others. Um, it, I would say we subsidize the airport operations, uh, in about 300 to 500,000 dollars a year, I think is what we do as a city. It fluctuates just depending on land sales as well. So, Air Park Ohio is an industrial park out there that we developed, but I'd be happy to put together a better kind of report.
I was gonna say, we could have a work session, I think would be great for this.
In the, yeah, definitely first quarter, but, um, also in the recent budget meeting that we had, you want to speak a little bit to the investment that the city makes compared to what the federal funds are received and what the benefit is to the community.
So this is a great example, uh, the, the item that we're talking about tonight was a, a Pappy project, which was funded, uh, 95% by the FAA and 5% by ODOT. So I'm sorry, it's kinda awkward to talk to you, uh, looking this way. Pappy is a, and I looked this up because I thought it might be asked, uh, precision approach path indicator lights. So those are lights on the sides of the runways that tell the pilots whether they're descending too quickly or, or not quickly enough. But, uh, so those are ongoing kind of investments that we need to do to, to maintain it. They're very much like a public road. It's, it's funding that we get through the FAA, which is Department of Transportation. So we have to maintain them just like we do, uh, the highways that, that go across the country. So when we receive those funds, we, um, we have to maintain those for a period of 20 to 25 years because it is a public airport and it's open to the public. So businesses use it, but anyone can, can fly in there. And it's a main economic development, really a tractor for the community. So the subsidy that I talked about really doesn't reflect the overall economic impact that the airport has. So when you look at the multiplier effects of the Air National Guard Base alone, uh, produces about a $68 million impact when you look at what it brings to the community. So beyond the income tax, the property tax, uh, the sales taxes and the other things, just having 1,200 people here on a daily basis doing the jobs out there at the guard base brings in other revenue to the community. Um, we can talk more, uh, we joke about this at our budget meetings where we could talk hours about other things happening out there at the airport. But the other, um, piece that a lot of people don't talk about is the National Advanced Air Mobility Center of Excellence. So that was another example where we leveraged, the city was successful in leveraging federal funds and state funds to get that done. The 10 and a half million dollar project, the city has a million dollars in that. So we're able to leverage, uh, the federal funding to pursue economic development opportunities. There's 14 companies that are doing business out there, um, doing the research as well as the Ohio UAS Center and a lot of other, uh, state agencies. So, um, there's that. The general aviation activity, I think too, is, is kind of understated, but there's a lot of business jet, uh, activity. We have about $900,000 worth of fuel sales related to those functions. So there are revenue offsets that we have and we try and maximize those as much as we can. So there are revenue offsets that we have, and we try and maximize those as much as possible while at the same time creating economic development opportunities for the community.
Well, certainly, when you look at the economic spinoff opportunities there, there's jobs created out there. There's companies at the industrial park, so there are job opportunities available to citizens. The money that's spent in the economy, the homes that are bought, it kind of, it is a loop of economic benefit that gets created out there. No, I'm just. It, it does generate income tax, Mr. Armstrong, that does, does help the general fund balance. The recent announcement out there about six weeks ago was that the Federal Space Force announced a new, a new mission out there that will bring about two hundred and twenty individuals that weren't there before. Those individuals pay tax at some level, and that income tax does help the city. So it does trickle down. That we've also set up, the airport is also set up in such a way that, one of the reasons we wanted the research lab there is that we want to actually build, in the future, we want to build those individual unmanned vehicles out there, or at least have the opportunity. And there's actually developable space around the airport to do that. So I really encourage you to research it. I'm not saying it's the exact answer you want, but, but the trickle-down effect is the increased income tax and the benefit to the entire community. Tom, is there anything else to add? I know Tom can, Tom can give you that information.
I will work with Mr. Armstrong here, and we'll have a conversation. Maybe we can set up a tour as well.
It's actually pretty interesting, Gary. I encourage you to take Tom up on that. Is there no other comments on first readings? Oh, Ms. Melissa, go ahead. Yes.
It's to decrease it. Was the money, was it already paid to them? Is the money coming back?
Typically, so there would be a purchase order in place for the total amount of the project. To reduce that purchase order, we have to come back. So they did not have to purchase as much material. They would not have been paid that, but we have to be able to reduce those funds down or that purchase order down through commission action because we approved the original contract amount, which was that three hundred and twenty-four thousand, or three hundred and twenty-eight, I guess. And then we would have to reduce that down by the four thousand. But no, the contractor would not have been paid that. They would be paid for the materials and time that they actually spent on the project.
And then just another question, with the whole airport, does Jobs Ohio help fund a lot of any of that or?
Jobs Ohio is involved. They have provided grants for different projects and activities out there, specifically, Commission just approved an OSIP grant through the state of Ohio to help with a fence project, those types of things, where they help us in infrastructure or capital investment, mostly related to the base, but also involved, I mean, they provided a large grant from the state of Ohio for the NOMC, the National Advanced Air Mobility Center of Excellence. So a ten million dollar building, six million was paid for by the federal government, the Department of Defense, and then three million was provided by the state of Ohio, and then the city paid for the remainder. So we were able to get a ten-plus million dollar building with nine million coming from other funding sources.
Right. So when you say that it was paid for by the state that Jobs Ohio?
In that NOMC case, yes, that is specifically Jobs Ohio. Some of the other grants, ODOT has an aviation division, and they have a program that provides funding or grant opportunities to communities that have airports like ours. And then FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, also has grant opportunities that we can apply for and utilize for capital infrastructure improvements on the airport or at.
And doesn't Jobs Ohio have to do with the data centers as well?
I believe they probably have provided some investment throughout the state on data centers. I don't know specifically on this one. I know there's the Job Creation Tax Credit Program, and I think that was utilized as part of the most recent announcement that you saw, and I believe that is Jobs Ohio funding.
Thank you. We'll continue with second readings.
Confirming and approving renewal of the agreements with the Huntington National Bank for Treasury Management Pository Services and Security Custody Services for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the period of November sixth, twenty twenty-five through November five, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a master client agreement with the Ohio State University for Fiber Connection at the Springfield-Beckley Municipal Airport and confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from July one, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrada?
I was wondering, Brian, if you could, you or Tom could specifically talk to what, how this is going to enhance the airport.
Yeah, Tom, if you want to speak to, this provides that internet connection and connectivity for tenants out at the airport.
Yes, Commissioner Estrada, so this is just a project we did with Ornet to provide the wireless communication capabilities at the airport. So for our tenants near the terminal, as well as some of the hangars that lie out, we've provided internet to them because they didn't have it before. So it really enables some businesses to be able to operate from the airport.
Great. Thank you.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number One to the subrecipient Agreement with Shelter Inc. for Comprehensive Solutions for Addressing Homelessness to reallocate funding among line items.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrada?
I assume what we're doing here is we're not increasing or changing the funding, it's just changing how they choose to spend some of the funding, but we're not really changing the bottom line on what they receive.
That is correct, Commission. When we do these RFPs and enter into contracts or subrecipient agreements, they provide a detailed budget in buckets of where they're going to spend the money. In this case, this is for case management services. Originally, line item or bucket was for case management services at hotel stays for their hotel vouchers. They have expended their hotel voucher line item, but there is still money in that case manager line item. This allows them to reallocate that and support case management in the shelters themselves, the congregate shelters.
So this request originally came from Shelter Inc. to the city?
Yes, and us working with our partners through our subrecipient agreements, looking at their, you know, we analyze through their invoices and those measures, and we look at where their funds are being spent, and then we work with them collaboratively to reallocate those funds so that we can maximize those funds for what they're intended for. And in this case, it's case management or homelessness services.
Great. Thank you.
The comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
We'll continue with emergency ordinance.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement by and between the city of Springfield, Ohio and Ohio Council Number Eight, Local Seven Thirty-nine, AFSCME, AFLCIO, and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners, from the audience? Go ahead, Ms. Melissa.
Do they come up again, like, you guys approve them?
An emergency, thank you for asking. An emergency ordinance requires a supermajority, which is four votes to pass, and it is, when it passes, it's good.
Okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. We'll continue. Is there other comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment D to the Engineering Services Agreement with Black &amp; Veatch Corporation for the Eastern Pressure District Water Line Upgrades Project to extend the project completion date to May thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from March one, twenty twenty-five, and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrada?
Wondering if you might give us, you or Chris, give us more information about this.
Yeah, I'll have Chris Moore speak to this specific project.
So on this project, Black &amp; Veatch provided the, what we call construction phase services or management out in the field while it was being built. There was a major defect caught as part of this process, which caused their, their time on the job to be extended. This does not increase the amount we're paying them, but this extends the duration so we're able to pay them for the work they perform because it was well past the completion date.
And currently, that eastern project is functioning well? We haven't had any more problems with it?
Correct. It is functioning well. It, all of the pumps have made it through the test, and I'm, I'm very pleased that we now have a looped redundant system out on the east end.
Yeah, one of, as I recall, Chris, one of our concerns when that, when that was put in place was it wasn't a loop. It dead-ended, so there were some pressure issues because it wasn't a loop. Do I remember that correctly?
Correct. The line that fed, you know, Prime Ohio, which has some of our biggest users, was a dead-end line, and we had trouble out there with, with pressure and volume. This solves all of those, and we also don't have to worry about one, one main break taking that area out of water. It's a very redundant system now, and will serve, serve that area very well for years to come.
And with the new fire station out there in closer proximity to the industrial park, having assurance of a lot of good water pressure and volume, it is, it seems we've managed to accomplish a couple of good things.
There was a lot of good that came out of this. I'm not, really, to me, the best thing is I can sleep better at night because there's not a dead-end line out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments from the audience? Go ahead, Mr. Armstrong.
Where is the location?
Pardon, you have the location?
Yeah.
So the original line will start around Brentwood Square Apartments. The original line ran from Brentwood Square Apartments on High Street, all the way out High Street, and fed Forty-One and fed Prime Ohio from that direction.
And you're talking water line?
Water line. This new line now ties into a thirty-six inch line around Springview Government Center, and there's a new booster station back there. And it runs up US forty. It has a tie-in connection at Tuttle Road that loops it in with the line on Forty-One. It continues down forty and has a tie-in down Bird Road that once again loops it in with that line on Forty-One. And then it goes out to Next Edge slash Melody Parks and ties into that line to give it a third connection to that line on Forty-One. So you can now look at forty and Forty-One having parallel lines with three cross connections in that area.
What's the, when you extend the lines, it's in the county. Kind of agreement does the city have with the county? You're giving them water and you're charging them the same rate as us?
So, so Mr. Armstrong, I, I would like you to get with Chris offline on that question just because it doesn't pertain to this particular ordinance, but I encourage you to still find that answer. Okay?
I'd like to know.
Thank you. Is there any other questions on this ordinance? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated for the Chemical Storage and Feeding Building Improvements Project at the Water Treatment Plant to extend the agreement completion date to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from May one, twenty twenty-four, and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners, from the audience? Or, Ms. Rexroth?
During the last meeting, I was flipping through on the moral obligations list, like there was something from, from twenty twenty-four that was paid emergently. This one is emergently from twenty twenty-four. Is this typical that we build things?
So can you speak to the, this particular ordinance only, Chris? Thank you, Ms. Rexroth.
I can speak to this one. So the, the reason this is being paid emergently is because we need to make sure that we pay our vendors in a timely manner. If they were to submit a bill and it went through the full legislative process, it could take as many as sixty days to pay that bill. In this case, the reason you see twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four, there's, there's some dates on here. This project, the design was started and the plans were submitted to Ohio EPA, and Ohio EPA sat on those plans for at least nine months before we were able to get them to approve them. We finally took the project out the bid after that delay, and only one contractor was interested in the project. That contractor's price came in higher than the engineer's estimate, so it had to be rebid. So the completion date on this project was set based on a anticipated timeline. That timeline was thrown some curveballs. So now the only way we can pay them is to extend the completion date because we cannot pay someone money past the original contracted completion date. So all this does, it doesn't increase the, the contract amount, it just extends the completion date and then allows us to pay them for the work that was performed during that time. Does that, does that answer?
Yes.
Yes, this is a big drawn-out project. Yep.
Other comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving change order number four to the contract between the city and A and B Asphalt Corporation for the Fountain Avenue Paving Phase One B Project to increase the contract in an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars ninety-two cents for a total contract amount not to exceed two million four hundred eighty thousand five hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents, and to extend the completion date to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the city manager to execute said change order number four and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll go ahead and ask Chris to go and explain this one.
So this is the final change order for the South Fountain Project. It contains twenty-eight items. The, the big-ticket items on here are primarily for sidewalk. We had to, when you install an ADA compliant ramp, you have an obligation to chase the sidewalk back so many feet. We had more cases on this project where we had to chase the sidewalk back to get grade. And then we also learned on this project that back when it was constructed, really decades ago, the wire for the streetlights was poured into the concrete curb. So when we started to replace the concrete curb, it ripped out the streetlight wires. Ohio Edison wasn't aware of this. We were not aware of this. No one would ever do that. You bury it much deeper than that. So we had places where in order to replace the curb, the streetlight wires were broken, and we had to replace that. So this, this covers all those causes.
The comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Uh, Commission.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Thank you.
Chris Moore. So if they paved and tore up the whole concrete sidewalk, why wasn't oops out there to show where the lines were?
The line, the lines were oops. There were oops locate marks, but the lines were much shallower than anyone had ever imagined. And they also, when, when it's, so all they were doing was popping out the curb. If you pop out the curb, you do that with great confidence. If you pop out the curb, you do that with great confidence that there's nothing embedded in the curb. These wires were physically embedded in the curb. They weren't in a conduit, they weren't buried underneath it, they were poured into the concrete.
But they can, through the engineering departments and the whole architecture of the layout of the city for the electric and the water lines and sewer lines, that's all knowledgeable through the government of the engineering department, correct?
We, we, we're responsible for the location of the water and the sewer lines. Ohio Edison is responsible for the location of their wires. And that, that was, they, they located their wires properly.
So how were they ripped out and put out?
Well, they, they would have had to have, they would have had to have been because...
They were, they were, they were embedded in the concrete. We had to remove the concrete to do the job.
I understand.
No one would ever anticipate that the wires would be embedded in it, but they were. So when you remove the concrete, you remove the wire.
It, just to simpl- simplify, if you live in a very old house, sometimes the plumbing is also poured through the floor of the house in the concrete. And so to do a bathroom is to rip out the floor and the plumbing and start over. And in the same way, some of our streets, because they were so old and have not been touched, they were done in a very inefficient way. They would not have known that until they started getting into it. When they got into it, they realized in the original bid that that was, that was not in there as far as realizing that the electric is actually poured through concrete in a very inefficient way that was done decades and decades ago.
Correct.
So it's one of those things that they would have bid to fix in the original bid, but they didn't know it till they got into it, and this is why we're at a change order, an emergency change order.
Okay.
Clerk, call the roll?
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving change order number one to the contract between the city and Kennison Excavating Incorporated for the West Parkwood and North Yellow Springs Street Water Line Replacement Project to decrease the contract in an amount not to exceed, uh, $8,137.20 for a total amount not to exceed $220,862.80 and to extend the completion date to September 26, 2025, authorizing the city manager to execute said change order number one and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
If you would just tell us why we managed to get a reduction on this. That's great.
So on, on this project, the, the, there are 13 items, but the primary deduct came from pavement restoration. The contractor kept a, a very tidy trench, and they were able to patch it back very nicely. And then they were also able to bore or drill the water services in, in some locations and not disturb the asphalt. Because they didn't disturb the asphalt, they didn't have to restore the asphalt, and were able to deduct that from the contract.
Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.